Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the independent city council meeting. It's Tuesday, August 14th, 2018. It's warm outside and it's smoky. The records show that everybody is here and happy and probably glad to be inside where it's air-conditioned. So, thank you so much. Council members, you have minutes of the July 14th meeting, excuse me, July 24th meeting in your pocket. Do they meet with your approval? Will you approve?
Second.
Motion to, and second to approve all thirty, if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. In a matter of personal privilege, I'm going to grant Counselor, Counselor Gaffey, Martin Willis, a moment.
So, I would just like to extend my thanks to my friends, my colleagues, my fellow council people, city staff, for their wonderful luck and support and the beautiful basket that they've sent today. And the knowledge in the past and in my father, it was greatly appreciated and we guys were amazing and wonderful. Thank you.
Please, you can do. Please.
Carry on.
Thank you very much. These are comments, because you don't want approaching. Thank you very much. Reports and presentations you have in front of you, council members, you have the document that is going out as we search, if we get in search for our city manager, you'll all have that. I just wanted to thank you for those of you who've had edits, thought it worked out really well. I'm pleased with the product and I look forward to, I know people are looking forward to following up on this. So, that's all I have at the moment. And moving promptly forward, Mr. Klein, I think it's you for the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, thank you. Just follow up on that recruitment flyer that is also posted to our website and then we'll be going through all the various promotional listings, and probably already started, I know it's already started. So, that's out there. One other thing that you have in front of you is a tort claim. I just, there was a question about that. The only information I have beyond what's in that tort claim, though, is that it has gone to the insurance. So, we are one of the number of parties that was named in that tort notice, which is frankly not terribly unusual. Since you asked, I'd like to go with your comment on that.
Thank you.
So, a number of other different things. One of the biggest news of the day, and I just found it out for sure, we were awarded a grant to do the transportation system plan update through, oh God, so that is, I believe, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant award. So, we are going to be meeting with their staff shortly to start working out the total work and identify contractors for that work. That is actually work, I believe, that is done by the state with us as a partner.
Yeah, they have a kind of a list of preferred contractors, the consultants that we'll work with.
They manage that work, I believe.
Yeah.
And this is throughout the management plan?
This is transportation system plan. So, this is to take a look at all the road systems throughout the city, do the traffic council, where we need to improve, what we need to add into the system, where there are gems within the system, follow up to the work that we've done on landings, see what needs to be done downtown in terms of future improvements, that kind of work. Great entry project. We could, you know, we didn't get to more last year. We were very hopeful and again, this year we did. So, it needs to get done and, you know, it'll ready to create another roadway in the future, if you will, that's a future subject. That was great news. We had the opportunity to sit down with somebody that has an interest in becoming a vendor of kayaking floating devices in our park this coming summer. So, we're looking forward to sort of kicking that off in a trial capacity, see how that works. That would be kind of fun. We've been hoping that would need, we'd have somebody to buy it, but have the, you know, the engine of it to do that kind of project. So, hopefully it will be coming. The chief and I and a whole lot of other folks that are largely criminal justice experts over the last two days, or a good portion of the last two days, in a criminal justice mapping system project funded by the National Institute of Corrections. It was really, really an interesting piece of work. For me, it was kind of closes the circle on my career because I actually started my career doing something similar in Berrin County, Arizona. But, you know, it's, you know, it's the big look at what we do in our system from the point of, you know, where law enforcement presence gets felt by somebody who's bad behavior to throw out the system, probation, district attorney's office, courts, and so forth, and just looking at what all the things are and mapping out the system, where the weaknesses might be, where the strengths might be. I was pleasantly taken by all the various opportunities there are to improve behavior without, you know, resorting to punishment, you know, the last resort to punishment before you get there. And that we have a pretty robust system of dealing with offenders in a way that is fairly humane. So, that was good to see. So, anyway, let's see, homelessness task force, that continues. I did have an opportunity to sit down in these past couple of weeks with some recommendations from the county. The county has not been at the table for this and I met first with Brent Demoe, from a staff member of the county, and he's been doing amazing things with the county and the area of homelessness. And it was pretty clear to me that putting him on a task force would be not his best time spent. Typically, it's a task force that, you know, mostly county commissioners and elected officials wasn't really his first staff person. But he did lead me to have a meeting with Commissioner Answorth, who has an interest and we're gonna, he's gonna explore that and see whether he wants to do that. I'm perfectly happy to, you know, give me a dependency because it's really his county effort more than it is a city effort. And we are, are contacted by homeless, large, and law enforcement. You know, the county is intervening on all ends of this problem and so they need to really be at the table when it comes to the conversation of the resources. So, I'd given that a lot of thought. I know he's with you guys, so he would have to his schedule. But, anyway, that's ongoing. With the staff, we're working with our hotel development crew to continue to work with them to put together the, I think, the city's trade booth for the, I think, the city's annual conference coming out this September. So, again, if you're not signed up for that, is there still time here? Are we done?
I think it might be, but check with me if you're interested. I think I might be able to get you.
Okay. So, it's a great conference and I think it's gonna be one of the better ones with new leadership, good training opportunities. So, if you have a chance to get away for a couple of days, that would be, I think, time轴 management. And anyway, we're gonna put a booth in there, hopefully as close to food as possible, so people will see us and, you know, try to get some exposure from the city and what we've been doing over the years. See, we have scheduled a meeting with our web designer. We're gonna take a look at rebranding our website, get it, modernize it. It gets a lot of, you know, it gets a lot of hits, but it's, you know, some of them certainly gets a little stale and cumbersome, so we're looking to see if there's ways to streamline it, make it more useful to the public. Websites are becoming less and less an important part of, you know, an important part of social media, and that's it. But nonetheless, we need, we need it from a lot of reasons, a whole host of reasons. So, looking to see what we can do there. I've had an opportunity to meet with the museum board again. I got with them in retreat last month, met with them in a follow-up session this month talking about when, you know, how they're doing on becoming a policy board as opposed to the advisory board, as opposed to an operational board. We will be coming back to you next month with a proposed ordinance that would implement some changes that would, you know, affect like that change for them. I think they're, you know, they're moving along in that direction. I think they're happy to be doing that. We'll probably do some reorganizations as well at a staff level to help facilitate that change. So, those changes will make internally, not the least of which would probably be the designation of a museum manager using existing resource, or existing resource. Might be slightly impacted on the budget, but Lori's got it covered. She's fine. And that's going on. We are, the plan now is by the end of the month, August, to close on the properties and it's landing with Tokla, with Tokla properties. So, that closing will be all of the lots, one through four. That's the half of the lots that are on the riverside of the roadway, on Spur Lane. So, that's scheduled for the end of the month, which is go through all the closing documents and, I'll, all those now. In the area of water, she comes no surprise with this hot-cried summer. We've had, you know, a whole host of problems and unfortunately, nicely, maybe we lost a groundwater well due to some mechanical failures. So, we've, we've taken measures to get that repaired in the meantime with that and the like, more heavily on the other existing well system that we have in place. We have asked for help from some of the bigger water consumers, the school district, ourselves, others, to look at any potential, the things that they could do to lower the demand. You may not have noticed this, but there's probably a two-point pressure drop in the water system that helps to relieve some of the quantity of water that goes through. So, if your showers are quite skimming and hard as they used to be, our fault, enjoy the nice softer approach to it. Meantime, we are hopeful that the public at large, while we're not asking for anything particular at this time, we just hope that public at large takes whatever conservation measures they can, you know, maybe not more to the grass a lot, you know, let it brown in the Oregon way, you know, and other things that you can do to just reduce that water consumption. We hope the public are, are there with us to get that in. But not, not a great threat at the moment. We'll get back to it when it gives and when it comes on. Let's see, we have finished the last section of the path that we're doing this year in Mountford Park Inspiration Gardens. So, if you haven't been out there, this is out there. It looks amazing. We're out to the education center with our pathway. We have the parking lot in and striped, the path between F and G is in. It's a wonderful, wonderful park and obviously thanks to Master Parker Jim again for making more fitted out there. We are, Public Works is following up and Kite is following up with the county and trying to do some improvements at Hoffman and Gun Club. The county has agreed to partner with us on doing some things out there, so looking at joint grant opportunities. There's a variety of host problems out there we'd like to address, at least in which are pedestrian and pathway, but also just traffic conflicts and movement. So, hoping to get some solutions there and get grants to help us with that. In the area of innovation and economic development, we are hosting a workshop Friday with those units exploring data science for public good in rural communities. We're going to identify pilot projects, we might be able to work on it independence. Carry on for our airstream rally in September, also the Hockin Territory Black Park and Mitchell Tech, whole county tourism promotion. So, several things in the area of tourism that we're working on. And a successful Farmer Ford traffic tracking project with intel, tracing blueberry, monitoring environmental conditions, and planning follow-up projects as we sit here. Let's see, in land use, we, Liberty Place subdivision, that's a subdivision south of Sunset Park, Sunset Meadows, A with the extensions of the infant knife. To the south, that has, the first phase has been accepted and completed. It's in for final plating. The 33 lots will be getting worked soon. Building department's completed review of second woman permits. That by itself is a hundred and five thousand dollars in SDC. So, we're anxious to get those out the door and get those folks drawing and collect those checks, up those, those capital funds. We are busy with Gun Club Road subdivision, that too is, is building at a pretty fast pace and I think there's at least a dozen permits already out on that site. Plan commission approved a four-unit multifamily project by the Cold CDC for homeless veterans on Ninth Street. So, those building plans are currently being reviewed and moving firmly quickly and we're very happy to get that project going. Last night, planning commission met and approved another five-odd subdivision on, you know, on the lots just to be at least south of General. So, we'll be squeezing something in there. So, that'll be nice, you know, to continue to, you know, to fill in those gaps in our, you know, in our community. They have the intent there to build 10 duplex homes on that subject. You'll be happy to hear this, is to be approved a new barrel of retail use in the Fire Department May. The reason the chair, the project entails a conversion of 800 square feet of an existing barrel of processing facility to retail use. So, there's already a facility there that should be added to retail component. And then finally, our staff has met with Aaron Young and his realty group to plan the site design, to begin the, the anticipated pre-application for the site design view for lot A, hospice point, right, adjacent to the roof. So, we expect that, the site design view to begin within the next two to three weeks. I think the planning team, this first lot's a planning team, so we're happy to be working with them. And so, that, we're looking forward to that project getting out and going here and that's probably, they want to bring it out in October and that's entirely possible. So, that's my report for the evening so far. Questions?
Questions for the manager?
I do.
Please.
So, regarding the, you said that the Sunset Meadows continuation had been approved. Was that the area where some adjacent homeowners had concerns regarding the swell?
It was. I've, I had a follow-up conversation with them. And I, I don't know if they're entirely satisfied with those, that conversation. I think they understand the issues a little better and how that's being addressed. You know, I don't have, I don't have the details of what the solution to their, their problems are, but I think everything there has been engineered to meet standards and, you know, Public Works requirements for detention, retention, and release of store water. Okay? So, it's, I know their concerns.
Right. I was at the door, not that much of a station.
Yeah, I don't mean to be insulting, but I think, not to you, but I don't mean to be insulting, but there are a lot of folks who move in from prior parks to country, hiding so that California, that aren't used to, you know, rainy environment, wet environment, you know, and how that could work here. Thank you.
Can you go back to the innovative and economic development project? I missed part of the words on that. It was right after Public Works' improvement on Hoffman and Gun Club and right before land use on Liberty Place.
The OSU one?
Yes, the OSU one.
The far before, oh, the OSU one. Okay. So, rather than me, I will let Sean explain that one.
So, that's, OSU is interested in how they can go into rural communities and apply data science to solve rural community problems. They think that there's an opportunity to use their extension service to create a replica well, where they can use extension to go into a community, work with the community to identify, you know, challenges that could be housing homelessness, or it could be, we need to figure out who and where in the community, or anything, anything that can be, you know, potentially tackled with data science, and then figure out how they can use OSU's resources to apply data science to basically solve those problems with the community. So, we're gonna be getting good for that.
Sounds like a good appeal.
And being close doesn't hurt.
Yes.
And innovative and creative, our reputation concedes to that.
Exactly.
There you go. Additional questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Kissler, I think you get to be the next person with us this evening. It's so amazing, he still have much after the week, gets a full night's sleep.
Right? Amazing what he even like.
The little guy's a couple months old, but I heard he had a full night recently.
See, there's no bags. All right. So, I wanted to give you a quick update on Indy Works and how it's been performing in the last fiscal year. So, right in front of you right now is a heat map of where all the requests for services have been throughout the city. Basically, the more towards red that you get, that's a higher density of requests. So, basically, this just really shows you that people from all over the city are using it, so we're hitting all the corners in the area. Just some other kind of general information, the app was downloaded more than 2,500 times during the last fiscal year, so that's quite few out of the community of 10,000. 210 requests for services were submitted in fiscal year end 2018. If you go to the next one here. Okay, so there's requests by department. Compared to last year, the number of requests for each department has more than doubled, so there's a lot more use going on there. Primarily, the administrative department in cooperation with the police department gets the bulk. That's mainly during the summer months for tall grass, vegetation, stuff like that. Let's see, can I go to the next one here?
What's Wise Town?
Wise Town was actually, we integrated Indy Works into the virtual situation room during the March 2 event. And so, any issues that created that were also then.
I just read about it, we're just there.
Yeah. Yep. So, this shows the performance of each service request that we're doing. So, for each item, we set what we call the service level agreement. So, let's say you ask a general question of the city, we say that you should get an answer within three days, for instance, if I'm, for a weekend. Or if it's a pop hole, you know, you get up to 30 days that you're expected to actually complete that. So, this kind of shows you, the green is requests that were completed on time, red kind of shows you where we took longer than we should have on those events. So, I think this really shows that we've really stepped up to the plate to make sure and get things done on time when requests are submitted. Compared to last year, we were only meeting those goals about half the time and now you can see we're pretty much meeting them all of the time. That's pretty much it for the Indy Works update. I did want to mention some one other thing that, at least I think is pretty important. At the central high school council meeting, we pulled the students on how they prefer to communicate and overwhelmingly it was text messages. So, for the last month and a half, we've been piloting a program that we can text every number and directly communicate with staff. So, that's been going very well. Obviously, not only for students, but it also helps our hearing, our deaf people as well, and we've received nothing but good feedback. So, I encourage you, give it a try, tune out there listening, feel free to text us. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I want you to know that this weekend, I read every single one of the requests to Indy Works.
Yeah.
It was exhilarating.
I like the one with pictures, it's really helpful.
One thing I was very surprised to see, though, I thought this was for the community to send feedback and I noticed that a high percentage was from staff people doing Indy Works. Can't you just walk down the hall and tell somebody?
So, the reason that staff won't enter them as well is because it tracks it. So, staff sees something, yeah, it will automatically go to code enforcement, but that also keeps the timer on, okay, this has been noticed by somebody, we're working on it. If it goes overdue, the department head is alerted, the city manager is alerted, so it's really a way to track.
I, I understand that. I just, it just kind of inflates the numbers as far as what comes in from the community itself.
Sure. You can break down our work.
Mayor?
Some of those are actually generated from phone calls to City Hall. That's correct. And they're entered into Indy Works.
Okay.
Okay.
I would add, you know, I understand the, the concern that that does, look like it places numbers, but that's, that's really not the point of the product. It really is a work management, workflow management project for us and so for, I would like to see everything reduced into one simple system. Indy Works is as good as any, so that we can track it, we can track workflow, we can track project completion, and there's, you know, there, there's accountability. And so, it doesn't really matter to me what the numbers are so much as the fact that the work is getting, you know, getting tight, it's getting done in a timely sort of way and that I can, you know, I can look back and see who was responsible for seeing that that work was done.
I think that kind of brings up a really different point. Indy Works isn't just the mobile app on the phone. I mean, you can call into City Hall and Giselle or Jeff or whoever answers the front desk and also, and I afford you, you can also go to our website and fill it out. It's not just the app, it's.
Additional questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. This is helpful. Sergeant, I think you get to carry the Independence Day after-action report.
Good evening. Mayor, city council. You have all had a chance of looking through the report, but I did want to, I believe I fell short a little in emphasizing just how beneficial it was to have the addition of private security on hand this year for the planning process and for the event as a whole. Whether it was their presence in the park or their traffic control duties that they took on, that portion that they took on this year, it really freed our officers up to monitor the crowds at the gates and to be free and available to respond as necessary. So, and I'm sure there were other factors at play in the safety success that we had, that I believe we had. But I do believe that the private security was, was a huge, was a benefit. So, in that, I'd like to see us continue to move in that direction in increasing the ratio of private security to, to police officers for the future. Do you folks have any questions?
Questions for, because we all have the report in our, I think it stands a report. Thank you very much.
And I read that too, all the way through. Nicely.
Thank you very much. And I think if you want to continue with, with the, is there anything that needs to be done in the Independence Police Department report? We just have the written report in our pack. Is there anything that needs to be spoken about? Chief is shaking his head.
That's just informational, I just.
Just informational.
Okay. Thank you.
But that picture of the pile of money was sure impressive.
If you like that one. That was not for me, I don't know where that came from.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I'm going to, Lori Butch has a finance report in there, there's a staff memo. If you have, does anybody have questions? It's pretty straightforward, I thought. And departments are doing well, they stayed on budget or, you know, many cases, under budget. And I was, that shows the appropriate type of control.
And I appreciate that also. I will reiterate what I have said several times. I'd really like a list of the inter-fund, or the, yes, the inter-fund transfers. What is going where? Because what it just says is transfer in and transfer out, it doesn't specify location of the transfer out.
She actually can see her script, so that's, she'll, she'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Well, she's prepared to follow up on that. There is a schedule in the back of our budget that's adopted every year, which shows, shows what I think you just asked for, where it comes from and where it goes.
It does show that, yes, but it is very hard to take this report and try to compare it against the budget and see what went where when, because the, they're all cumulative figures.
I can do that. Thank you.
Good. Okay, we're gonna continue moving forward. We have a public hearing scheduled and so I think our planner gets to come up and I think I get to lead the first part of this. Is this my part, Karen?
Aye, y'all, yes.
Yes, thank you very much. The public hearing before the independent city council is now open for application. AXZC012018, Julie likes applicant. Do any councilors need to disclose any conflicts of interest, biases, ex parte contacts, or site visits? Everybody okay?
We have, thank you.
Okay. Oregon land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. I now turn it to staff to do your part.
Read that thing.
As we have some areas open. Go ahead.
Required by state law, read this. The applicable substantive criteria upon which the case will be decided are found in the Independence Comprehensive Plan and Development Code, subchapter 12. These criteria are addressed in the staff report and will be read and summarized by staff during the presentation of the staff report. All testimony, arguments, and evidence presented must be directed toward these criteria or other criteria in the Independence Comprehensive Plan or Independence Municipal Code, which the speaker believes to apply to decisions. The failure of anyone to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude appeal to the Oregon State Department of Appeals based on that issue. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the State Department of Appeals shall be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidence required on the proposal before the city. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Thank you very much for reading that. Now, it's your staff report, Sharon.
So, real brief staff report, again, as, as the mayor mentioned, it's a, it's a proposal to annex an approximately one acre parcel of land located at 6309 Corvallis Road. Planning file is AX-ZC012018, type three annexation, zone change. In Independence, consolidated annexation, zone change, bypasses reviewed by the planning commission and go straight to the city council for a decision. I want to quickly go over the application, show you where the site is, show you specifically what, what we're looking to do. Talk really, really briefly about the criteria that apply to this decision, those criteria are outlined in your, in your report, and then respond to any questions that you may have. Again, the other thing, opposing annexation of approximately one acre.
Again, the applicant proposing annexation of approximately one acre at six three zero nine Corvallis Road into the city of Independence. The map on the screen in front of you shows the location of the parcel, it's the parcel in white with the address label on it. It's about a quarter of a mile just south of the River Road Bridge, located between the River Road. It's currently in Polk County in the city's urban growth boundary zone, suburban residential. Again, it's in the, it's in the urban growth boundary, it's in that little red circle there that I just turned on. Quickly zooming in, just giving you an overview of kind of what's around it. That pink area that's immediately surrounding the property, that's all of the city's urban growth boundary. As a reminder, the urban growth boundary is that area outside of the city limits of Independence that the city has designated as kind of the next phase of land that is appropriate to annex in the city to accommodate its future growth needs. The land immediately to the west and south of the property is in the city, it's its own low-density residential, that's all that yellow property showing up. That black dash line shows these, is the city limits. So what this application seeks to do is basically move that line, and that's something to encompass that property, and basically do what's showing on your screen. So just apply that low-density residential zoning, expand the city limits to encompass the property, and it's pretty much as simple as that. As I mentioned, in this initial statement, the applicable criteria are in chapter 12 of the Independence Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan, those are outlined in detail in the staff report. I think I'll just touch on a couple of the big things. As far as annexation is concerned, really we're looking at consistency with the Comprehensive Plan, Transportation System Plan, and then whether or not there's a public need for this annexation. So by virtue of the fact that the property is in the city's urban growth boundary, it's clear the city has designated this property as desirable to include in the city, and will help the city achieve its growth objectives, and therefore staff is supported with the annexation. Some of the key elements from the Comprehensive Plan that apply are found in an intergovernmental agreement that the city has with Polk County, which addresses some of those criteria in the staff report. And then essentially, we want to make sure that there are public services nearby, or that can be made available to serve future development on property, so that's outlined in the staff report as well. Again, staff recommends approval based on those reasons mentioned above, and on the staff report, happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Okay, so I'm, will be, I'm going to do some different other communications that we need to answer with the record, Karen.
I have not received.
Thank you. Okay, since there are no questions by council, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, the applicant, others who wish to speak in favor, does anybody here wants to speak in favor? Please.
Thank you.
Good evening, how are you? Welcome to council.
Thank you, thank you very much. My name is Julie Legs, the applicant, and owner of the property, and I just want to say thank you for hearing this petition. I agree with the staff report, and I think we probably did on that, Zach. I just wanted to also mention, I have, some services are available, they would be accessed likely at the River Oak tie-in, and I did some due diligence and spoke with the Weber's, the adjoining or adjacent property owners, and had verbal agreements or easements, but wanted to make sure that the, you know, exercised due care, that it should be brought and settled at the property. I realize that's really an issue for public works, but you know, I just want to make sure that that is, you know, in front of us all. And that's really it, thank you so much for hearing this petition.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, is there anybody else who wants to speak in favor? I see nobody rushing to the microphone, is there anybody opposed who wishes to say anything? I see no one going to the microphone. So without that, I don't think that there's any. Mary? Yes, sir?
I think he may have had one, who wanted to speak in favor.
Oh, excuse me.
Just saying, I'm outside, I'm not my woman.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you step in, I apologize.
No, my name is Michelle Lewis-Libert, at sixty-four zero Corvallis Road, and just pretty much adjacent to where that property will be, and as a county, in the county right now. I just really think that the quality of houses that have been built along there, I just think that this being in the city of Independence will really just be a huge asset, visual asset to our, to Independence, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. I just had, are you to the north?
I am actually just to the east, so it'd be northeast of that, on the Riverside of Road.
Great. Great. Now, does anybody have anything in opposition? I'm going to guess, there's not going to be any rebuttal, I'm following, I have to follow the script as a state mandated script. Okay, unless there's objections, I'm going to close the green, anybody object? Okay, the green is now closed. What would we like to do? Is this okay with everybody? Makes sense? I agree. Yeah, I'm glad you're good. Okay, this is an action item, and I have to get to the, to my, to our motions here, excuse me, on page forty-five? Forty-five, then to forty-six, if somebody would like to suggest action, please.
I'll kick it off. I move to approve declaring territory annex to the city of Independence and amending the Comprehensive Plan map concerning map for tax lot one eight zero two of Polk County assessor's map, eight S four W two eight D, stating an effective date of Thursday, September thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and to read the proposed ordinance council bill number two zero one eight dash zero two in full, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time. Sir?
I have a motion second, discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
And ordinance declaring territory annex to the city of Independence and amending the Comprehensive Plan, land use map, and zoning map for tax lot one eight zero two map, eight S four W two eight D, and stating an effective date.
Okay, we have our second motion, someone would care, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance council bill number two zero one eight dash zero two for the second time by title only.
Second.
Second, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
And ordinance declaring territory annex to the city of Independence and amending the Comprehensive Plan, land use map, and zoning map for tax lot one eight zero two map, eight S four W two eight D, and stating an effective date.
And the third motion, I move to adopt proposed ordinance council bill dash two zero one eight. One eight dash oh two.
Thank you.
There you go. Time to hear a second down there.
Second.
Second by Diana. I have a motion second, final passage, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
The ordinance, the bill has passed and will be assigned ordinance number one five six seven.
Congratulations, welcome to the city. Okay, our next item, let me get back to the agenda here. Mr. Irvine, I think you have on Riverview Master Park Plan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a continuation of one of the discussions you probably have had a month ago or so. We presented the final design of the Riverview Park Master Plan. This is really just the opportunity to formally adopt that as part of the overall arts and open space master plan. And the intention there is just to make sure that all work we put into this and the design, there's already sort of a conceptual design in that plan, that sort of is what's currently eligible for assistance of charges and sort of our official plan for the park. This is an opportunity to take this new design, as we come up with more refined designs, incorporate a little comment for the community, and kind of put that into the master plan and say, this is a more detailed version of what we're looking for with the park. I think that's a pretty straightforward explanation, so if you have questions, I'd have to answer.
Questions for staff? Really appreciate it, we saw it a while back, this is the formalization of that. Someone would like to suggest action? Resolution fifty-five?
I move to adopt resolution eighteen dash one four eight six, adopting Riverview Park Master Plan for the city of Independence.
I have a motion, second, and a second. Now that end, I'll just say, I'm excited about this plan. I think it's a great, it's a great part of which will work into our old 2040 plan, and as we go forward in the coming year, I'm excited for what's happening. I really appreciated the broad spectrum of participation by so many that were in that, and I really do appreciate staff and the other folks that worked to make that happen. Additional comments? If not, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Mr. Klein, I think you have the next item?
Your next item is the consideration of request to extend the lease on the boathouse, the western's boathouse. Now, we've had that lease place, license place since two thousand and three. The initial request for a five-year extension, I spoke with Darren about this, and said that given that you, given the plan that you just acted on, five years may be enough for, if we're doing well, maybe interfering about plans to update the Riverview Park. So we agreed three years is fine, we won't be, you know, it shouldn't be a problem in a three-year horizon to, you know, to give them the license at the same time that the park work won't be underway at that point in time. There's still pretty good fundraising, I think it has to take a license. So with that, I'd like to ask you, are you willing to go ahead and enter into a three-year extension of that lease?
Questions for staff? Are you okay with this? Or you want to make a motion?
I move to approve amendment number three to the license agreement number two zero zero three dash five zero nine dash one zero, extending the terms to eighteen.
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years on the original date of lease.
Great, I have a motion, second, discussion, pretty straightforward, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Thank you, you have the next item also.
Okay, so next item, I don't have the government, one of the engineers' governmental. So this is a request for a change order on Independence Riverfront Park work. Initially, this was not included in the bid work, one, because we didn't think we'd get as favorable of results as we did get, and two, because we were a little area of letting this work out to the edge of Riverview Park, given that it might, at some point in time, be doing the work at Riverview Park. Given the timing between now and when Riverview Park is likely to get underway, we'd like to go ahead and ask you to finish this northerly extension of the trail, so that the project from a technical purposes must complete. We think, you know, that the vast majority will survive any work that would get done at Riverview Park when the time comes, but at worst, there'll be some small, there'll be some small maintenance that will be done to that existing trail system. But during the, in the duration, you'll be able to access it directly from the current parking area, rather than having to take the gravel path to the concrete path, and this gives you more radiative accessibility all the way to the parking lot. And it's within hand, I would add that it's all within the available resource from the grant, from the state legislative award. The total of that now is 1.4 million, this brings the new total up to 1.38 million of this contract, so still have a few months to spare.
Additional questions for? I just had a question about, you know, exactly, you just extended that, the pathway out, and then.
Landscaping in that area.
Landscaping, is any curbing or anything like that that's going on there?
No, no curbing at all, we're just getting the trail work out there.
That'll actually come up to the, I'm trying to visualize where it's actually coming up to.
So right now you have, so I, I wish I had an area on this, but.
Yeah.
So you have, you have two different trail segments going on. You have the upper board block, which is, extends all the way up to, connects with the sidewalk on Seastreet, works its way up. So that's on the upper level, that's on the level that's adjacent, the same level as the hotel is. Below, you have a pathway that, at this point in time, had, goes, comes up a little shy of the parking lot to the north, and terminates right here, you know, against the side of the building, or just outside of the parking lot of the building, the new parking lot. So it continues on up to Main Street. So you can take it from Main Street now, on the lower level, where it will be flooded from time to time, follow that, there'll be a couple different ways you can go, a couple interesting things, there'll be some, you know, some gardens, some little forest growth, a number of different things before, when the state is all completed. And then you'll take it to about, I forget how long the extension is, but probably a hundred feet or so of the parking lot, and then all of a sudden, you're on concrete gravel. So the point here is, let's just go ahead and give it, let's go ahead and complete it to the parking lot, again, you know, so it's totally ADA accessible, and it's within the budget, and it's money that is not out, really frankly, so.
And it'll look a lot nicer.
It'll just look completely nicer, yeah. Not a lot of reason to say no to that, I think.
So wouldn't it be fair to say, this is, this is just what was, timing, we were cautious on the front end, and now that the numbers came in well, we've decided we can make sure that we can finish this within, within time, within budget, and all works?
Yes, all of those.
And I wanted to thank you, Mr. City Manager, for the very quick response you, you had given to my question about what was the balance of the first change order, and how that fit in together. Excellent explanation.
Really piqued my interest with that question, so I, so I decided I got to dive into this and see what was going on, because I just scratched my head, I don't remember how that worked.
It was extremely helpful, and I appreciate it.
Additional questions? Okay, we have, how do I, how do we, all right, do we approve, do we just make a motion to approve change order?
Change order number two.
Is that, oh, change order number two. Okay, is that?
Yeah. I move to approve change order number two.
Sorry, I have a second, okay, discussion? Isn't this exciting, folks? This is great, women are thrilled about this. Okay, does anybody have anything else they'd want to say?
I did, well, what, what is it, what do we anticipate being completed? We should have everything done, the deadline right now is October, we think we'll finish before that, it's just, okay, these are fully being mobilized back, because it's not a lot of work left to do, it's just, you know, the whole mayor's schedule, we look, look at it, huh?
Great. No additional questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Announcements?
I would disappoint you if I didn't have something.
Yes.
I wanted to share the content of the Independent, which is a local newspaper that is published here on a monthly basis. If I need to declare a conflict of interest, I will, because there's a really good article about MINE-Net in here, and I love that the author equates the partner that MINE-Net will be working on in Dallas to a fuzzy-eared rabbit. And I would encourage you all to read it, to find out what that connection is. It also has a very pertinent letter to the editor on the insider editorial comment about choices that were made on the budget for the city, and I have three copies, one is down here, I'll send two that way if you have to fight over them.
Additional comments? Okay, somebody just liked to send this home? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Be nice.